We'd like to call this meeting to order. We welcome you all here today to the County Commission Meetings. It's good to have you here. We have as big a crowd as we've had in awhile. That's kind of exciting. So, we certainly welcome you and hope you feel comfortable here. Let's reset this. Okay, so, we're gonna have a moment of silence today to open this meeting up. I guess we didn't get a prayer. And Pledge of Allegiance will be by Shelley Halcy. The Thought of the Day by Commissioner Harvey. So, a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Ms. Halcy.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a little reminder, on a national monument in Washington DC at the Roosevelt National Monument, inscribed in the granite walls there is this saying, "The only thing that limits our realization of tomorrow will be our doubts of today. Let's move forward with strong and active faith." I think it's interesting you use the word "faith" to describe and correlate that with doubts. So, that's my thought today, Mr. Chair.
Very good, thank you. It was interesting being back there with you this last week and seeing some of those national monuments. Gives you a sense of pride, doesn't it?
Yeah, and gratification.
Yeah. Very good. So, we have public comment on the agenda. Is there any that have come to speak to the Commission today? Please step forward and... Thank you. Whoops. There's several of you. Go ahead.
You got it.
Tell us your name and where you live and go from there.
Okay. My name is Kerry Wayne. I live in Marriott Sladeville. I spoke to you at the last Commission Meeting about what I was concerned as far as the retirement incentive program that the county has. Again, I talked about, and I'd hope that you'd look at it this time, Public Trust. It's up there on the wall. I read it to you last time. I'd hope that you'd turn around and look at it this time because I believe that that was merely theatrics as far as the approval for Commissioner Eberts and Sheriff Thompson's agreements. They've already been paid out. I asked you point-blank on that, whether or not that had been done. You failed to answer me. I've also sent you an email. Again, I'm trying to understand what is going on because I see irregularities that don't seem to go along with the policies. And I'd like to invite you over to my house. And I'll take you over and let you meet my next-door neighbor. She's a cancer survivor of 25 years. Five years ago, her husband was diagnosed with cancer. They spent their life savings trying to treat him. Now, he passed away two years ago. Now, for the last eight weeks, she's been off work because she's no longer in remission. She has choice between how she's going to either sell her house to pay for her treatment or...I don't know. She's just, she wants to survive, and I want to see her survive. But again, you guys passed a 22% property tax increase, and that's money that she could use for her treatment. And I think there's lots of other people out there in Weaver County that want to see...I don't mind, again, an increase when I see the money being used responsibly. And I think that's one of the things I'm having a really hard time with, is understanding how these giveaways relate to responsible financial stability. And I want you guys to...and I try to be as respectful as I can on this, but I'm really frustrated because of the fact I'm not getting that communication. Mr. Harvey came to talk to me today. That's the first time he's talked to me. And again, I'm hoping to open up that dialogue so that I can understand, and if I can understand, then hopefully everyone else in the county. But I have done contracts for 20 years, and I have never, ever, ever seen a payout on a contract prior to its approval by whatever authorities it was made out for or before the contract is fully completed. And this goes on constantly here, and I can't understand it. Again, it's a matter of how we spend our money in Weaver County. I'm a federal retiree. I know what it's like to be, you know, to be in that position. I don't want to take retirement benefits away from our county employees. What I do is I want them to be in line with what other entities have. And I think that they have gotten, they've escaped way beyond what it is. I hope that you'll do the right thing today, get rid of that elective official provision because it's, no one else has it, no one else needs it. The people in this county should be treated fairly. Thank you.
Thanks Kerry, I appreciate that. And I think with the time this meeting's over today, those questions will be answered for you. Next.
Commissioners, thank you. I'm Tom Hanson, the City Manager for Washington Terrace. And in behalf of my Mayor, Mark Allen, and our City Council, you know, we had a real good opportunity this year to work with your Ramp Committee, though we weren't funded last year. We appreciate the fact that we were able to work together with them successfully through many seasons of the Ramp Grant cycle. And thank you so much for their effort, their willingness to volunteer for those efforts to make Ramp such a successful part of what we do in Weaver County. It has made a significant difference for the recreation, arts, museums, and parks throughout this region. We thank you for your support in that and look forward to continue for many years of continued support with the Ramp Project and those funds. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sylvia Salisbury in Ogden. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, gentlemen, for helping me see some success in the quest I've been on for many years to help people to say the Pledge of Allegiance with more meaning. I know it's a little thing, but I've tried to get people's attention on this for many years without success until now. I remember a caucus meeting that I was in charge of, and I brought this up to the people. And I said, "I wonder why we say it the way we do?" And a friend of mine, who's a schoolteacher, said, "Well, you can blame it on your elementary schoolteachers." And I thought, "Well, that makes sense. They teach it to the children in short phrases." But the trouble is, we never get past our kindergarten mentality on it and say it with meaning and with thoughtfulness. And I thank you for helping me in that.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Phil Swanson, North Ogden City. Two items. First of all, on behalf of North Ogden City, I want to thank the Commissioners and the Ramp Committee, Danette, Jeremy, and the others on that committee for the great work that they do, the time and the effort that they put in. I attended the last Ramp Meeting, and it was interesting to get a real firsthand look at the many hours and the work and the field trips and everything else that they make to get an idea of what's going on, to make those decisions in a wise way. Secondly, grateful for the attention that's been placed on the retirement program for the efforts that are being made and the corrections that are being made. Nobody's been happy with that program, but I'm happy with the efforts that I see you gentlemen making. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Maleski.
Commissioner Jenkins, Chairman. Commissioners, Toby Maleski. I live in Pleasant View City. I do feel the same way as a lot of the other people who spoke about Ramp. It's great. I see it in my city. I use a lot of the facilities outside my city that are benefits of the grant, and I think it's a great program. I did have some things to say on the elective services benefit, however, Mr. Wayne caught most of them for me. So, thank you, sir. I do have one question. It does say "to approve" on the agenda. Now, if the check has been sent and/or not cashed or cashed, either regardless, being sent without the approval of the Commission, that's north of $100,000 mistake. Is there someone's job gonna be lost as a result of this? Because I know in any other industry, you make $100,000 mistake, you're not gonna be working anymore. So, I just think that's one of the questions that the public needs to have answered. Thank you for your service. Appreciate you guys. Have a good day.
Thank you. And when we get that on the agenda, we'll go into that in detail, and we'll cover that. Zoe, thank you. Oh, one more. Ms. Brinkerhoff.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lori Brinkerhoff, Hooper, just Hooper, not Hooper City right now, just here as a citizen. First of all, I want to report and thank you. I think about four weeks ago, you had Fremont DECA team stand before you and make a request, and you supported them financially. They went on to state two weeks ago. That team that stood in front of you with your support, they presented on four projects, and they won first in-state out of those, three of those four projects. They're headed on to Nationals in Orlando. So, they, I think, wrote you thank yous, but they asked if I'd come and speak in behalf and just thank you. It's nice to see the support that these young people. They won in travel and tourism. They won in role-playing. They won in new entrepreneurship. You know, they're taking 22 of their team from DECA out to Orlando. So, thank you for that support. And then also, I did want to speak on action item H2 and 3. I think I just would reflect my concern about that. The transparency and the lack of ethics that was crafted in this policy in 2014. We understand that you three were not on the Commission at that time, and yet I appreciate your ethics now in seeking to reverse what was poor public policy that was crafted at that time. And I appreciate your making sure that all public funds are being used for the discretion of us, for the taxpayers, because it does have a very, it could have a negative impact on each of us as we go forward. So, thank you for your efforts. It's not an easy job to do what you do. I know it requires the wisdom of Solomon quite forward as you go and you look at these and you try to clean up bad public policy. So, thank you for doing this.
You bet. Thank you. All right. We thank you for spending the time to come here and make comments to us, all of you who did that. I just want you to know it's appreciated. We are listening, and hopefully at the end of this meeting today, you'll be happy with the decisions we make. All right. First presentation today is Utah Division Wildlife Resources to talk about PILT payments, payment in lieu of taxes. Justin Doling. Good to have you here today.
Yeah, good to be here. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Justin Doling. I'm with the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources, and I'm here to present our payment in lieu of taxes for the 2018 tax year. The Division of Wildlife owns and manages a little over 18,000 acres here in the county. It consists of our Middle Fork Wildlife Management Area, the Ogden Bay Waterfowl Management Area, the Harold Crane Waterfowl Management Area, and the Willard Bay Upland Game Area, and then a small angler access on the Ogden River. And so, we'd like to present you today with a check for $9,124.35. And before I give you the check, I just would like to check in and see if you have any concerns about wildlife here in the county.
Commissioners?
Yeah. Let me just, yeah. I come from an area that there is, especially with the heavy snow year, substantial amount of wildlife that we see. In fact, I had a moose in my backyard that rested for awhile over the weekend, and we're glad to have those animals there and the ability for them to come down to lower elevation at some time. But we do have an issue, we've had an issue in the past, or probably were, with an overabundance of turkeys in Ogden Valley, as well as across the state. I was able to pass some statute a few years back that actually gave your division the ability to give additional permits, but it appears that you're doing a little better, the division's doing a better job of making sure those turkeys are managed to the extent possible so that we can avoid situations where they impact private property as much as possible. And there's a lot of number of hunters out there that enjoy hunting them. So, I think the more that you can do in this region, especially Ogden Valley, where we seem to have an issue, would be very much appreciated by the people of Weaver County, especially the Upper Valley residents. But you're doing a great job, and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And just a little bit of an update there. We've moved about 700 turkeys this winter out of the region. I believe about 100, 100 or so of those came from that Upper Ogden Valley area around Pine View. We are making a recommendation to our Wildlife Board coming, this coming fall, to have unlimited over-the-counter turkey permits on private lands. So, that'll, last year we had 2,500. They sold out very rapidly, and we understand that we need to get ahead of that population and bring them back, back under control.
I'd encourage you to give a communication to your board that I think that's a very smart move. There's a lot more turkeys up there than there are hunters, and they can overtake haystacks, yards, and really infringe on people's way of life up there in a big way. And it gives an opportunity for you to collect some additional license fees as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which is both good.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your thoughts. And are there any other thoughts?
I had some wild animals at my house, but when my kids went to college, the wild animals went away. That's endearing, actually. I wish they'd come back.
Yeah.
It's interesting, these PILT payments, a lot of people don't understand them, so I want to take a minute and explain them to you here. When we all signed our documents that formed our states, there's certain regulations the federal government was required to adhere to when we get to our point. So, all these public lands go back to private ownership, and as a result, we get a chance to tax them as the state and the counties. And we get money because of that. And that money goes into our school systems and everything else. Well, a few years ago, they come and the federal government said, "You know, we're not gonna give any of those lands back." So, when you start looking at property or lands from Colorado West, were considered public land states. And the reason we are is because they're not returning those public lands to the people. Now, the argument goes on whether or not they should, and of course, that's an argument for another day. But the fact is, in our case, they don't. So, 67% of the state of Utah is owned by the federal government, which we get no property tax off of, none. So, what the government does is they give us a payment in lieu of taxes, and they call that a PILT payment. And that PILT payment is what he's given us today. And of course, we don't get a very big check in Weaver County because we don't have a lot of federal lands. But you go to, you go to counties in the southern part of the state, is it San Juan or Wayne? Is it both? I mean, yeah, they're like 90% federal lands, and they can hardly make enough money to even operate on. Their income is so low. And so, it's a debate that goes on, whether to fight this or not, and we do fight it. We think the state local controls better. I have always felt that. A lot of people like the federal government being involved because they're afraid that state management will take rights to hunt and do other things away. But, you know, the fact is, with our public lands, I don't know that very few of those are adaptable to be privatized. So, anyway, Justin, we appreciate you coming up here today and making this presentation and giving us a $9,500 check. That's really good.
No, you're welcome. And can I just clarify a little bit? I'm not with the federal government. I'm with the state of Utah. And so, I don't know, I don't understand what the federal government does as far as a payment in lieu of taxes, but this is for lands that we manage in your county. That's why our check's a little bit smaller.
Oh, so, it said PILT payment.
That's the state, yeah.
Is this not a PILT payment?
It is a PILT payment, but it's by the state of Utah.
Oh, so, these are, these are for state lands?
These are for state lands, correct.
Well, so, about 12% of the state is owned by the state itself, because it goes from 67 to 79%.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Yeah, about 12%. This is, this is your payment in lieu of taxes.
Yes, and that payment comes from the sale of hunting and fishing licenses here throughout the state. Right.
You know, right now, I believe we've got a good thing going on hunting and fishing. You know, Weaver County, we have a lot of CWMUs in it because so much of our property on Monte Cristo is privately owned. And of course, those CWMUs allow the property owners to be profitable and allows hunting to go on on their properties. I've been up and hunted two properties on top of Monte Cristo for elk, successful years ago, and some of the funnest hunts I've ever had. So, we appreciate that, and I'm excited that we get that opportunity.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Justin. Don't forget to drop the check before you leave. I'd hate to see you get to the car and say, "Whoops." That's right, help. All right. Consent items today. We had, we canceled last week's Commission Meeting because we were out of town. So, on consent items, we have, first item is to approve the warrants 1718 through 1719 and 437216 through 437369 in the amount of $1,003,000. And that was from last week. Then this week is another request of warrants 1720 through 1723 and 437370 through 437571 in the amount of $1,456,000. We, man, we put a lot of money through the county. It just surprises me when I go through these registers and for the warrants and see how much money goes through the county that is passed through funds, that we pass through, well, Brooks here, representing WACOG funds, and we pass those through, and we have the Health Department, we have just lots of funds that pass through. All right. Third item is request for approval to ratify a purchase order in the amount of 40, purchase orders in the amount of $45,00302. Request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $132,000. That's the, from this week. Request for approval of ACH payment to US Bank in the amount of $140,000. Request for approval of minutes from February 26th. Request for Weaver County Sheriff's Office to, for the approval of surplus material. There's, in their case, is a fridge. And the next item is surplus radios. Number nine is a request for Weaver County Information Technology Department to approve to surplus office equipment furniture. Number 10 is request Weaver Elections Department for approval of surplus office and equipment. Number 11 is request for Weaver County Clerk Auditor for approval of surplus office furniture. In case you can't get the ideas here, we're cleaning up. It's, we're doing our spring cleaning, and we're surplusing stuff that we have in surplus, extra. Number 12 is request for approval of new business licenses. Number 13 is request for approval of a retirement agreement by and between Weaver County and Ryan Reed, Thomas Rich, and David Anderson. Pardon me. And that's it. That's our consent items. So, to the consent items. Commissioners, questions?
I want you to go through it first.
Yes. Lynn, why don't you go ahead and go through those? We had you a couple of requests that we asked you to present that we had questions on.
I do have information on those. Yeah. Starting with the purchase orders, 22 totaling $133,000. 37% or $49,000 of that went to IT for replacement of laptops for the sheriff. 31% or $41,000 to the library for books and materials, HVAC maintenance, and cleaning supplies. 15% or $20,000 to the Health Department for vaccines, and 12% or $66,000 to Golden Spike Event Center for garbage and janitorial services. For last week's warrants, 156 checks totaling $1.3 million. 58% or $789,000 went to employee health and dental insurance, which is a monthly payment. 6% or $84,000 to planning for Weaver Pathways contribution. 6% or $82,000 to the library for annual equipment maintenance. 6% or $77,000 to corridor preservation, specifically Harrisville and North Ogden Projects, and 5% or $68,000 to dispatch for retiree insurance premiums. And the next one, this week's warrant register, 206 checks totaling $105 million. An example of one of those pass-throughs, the 20% or $291,000 in WACOG funds for 12th Street Utility Reconstruction. The one specifically a little more detail on, 20% or $286,000. $156,000 of that was for snow removal equipment specifically for the library system for plow equipment that was done through a purchase order. $42,000 is a combination, actually, of two payments to FFKR for the parking structure demolition redesign. $18,000 of that was worked through November 2018, and then $24,000 of that is worked through January.
Okay. I'll also ask you about this RMT equipment for $160,000. We could figure out what it was we bought. That was on the second page.
Yes, I'm wondering if that, if the bulk of that was the snow removal equipment. I will find out from...
In fact, that's exactly what it would be, yeah. That's exactly what it would be. Okay, yeah, that's part of that. Okay, I'm with you.
And then the, then the final part of that, the $40,000, was the final payment to the headquarters library for the lightning protection construction.
Yeah. All right. So, you remember?
The timing of those.
Get on this. We're getting that equipment just as the winter's over.
Snow removal, but that's life.
Questions?
No, I'd like to make just a couple of comments, if I could, Mr. Chair. First off, going back, why would we install a lightning rod in a library that's been sitting there for a number of years? Why wouldn't they think about that in the original construction? It's pretty easy, because when they did the pre-planning for that library building, they hadn't had a lightning strike at that particular piece of ground for decades, according to the folks who keep track of lightning strikes. When they built the library, because of the way it was structured and all the steel, they had like seven lightning strikes in the first year, which takes out computer equipment and things like that. So, they realized that the addition and all that extra steel on that property, it created something in the atmosphere that changed, that changed the way the, the way the lightning strikes, and so now they mitigated that so that it'll make it a little bit safer. You know, it's funny, but as I, as I sit around my own personal home, or people build homes, they don't even know where the snow's gonna drift, because it drifts differently because they put a structure or something in front of it. Oftentimes, they put a sidewalk right where the snow would drift the most. How do you, how do you pre-plan against Mother Nature? Sometimes you can, sometimes you can't. Those things just happen. I also, Mr. Chair, want to speak to, on the, on the agenda of the consent items, item number five, which is often just brushed by, which is ACH payments. Those are, the leadership of the county or key positions in the county have what's called a P-card, which allows them to make purchases to only a certain amount that gives them the flexibility within their departments to spend money for small items that don't have to then be encumbered through the purchasing department with writing out a purchasing contract going through all the other stuff. It saves money. And I noticed here that we're just about to, based on the purchase orders today, that we're now just over 10%. So, that, that's a great savings on the backside for county citizens. And then to the last thing, which was also, went over kind of quickly. But with Ryan Reed, Thomas Rich, and David Anderson, these retirement contracts, retirement I'm particularly grateful for those who spend and do so much for the county and then are recognized, just briefly, through a consent item, and I would like, and I think I can represent the three of us, we really appreciate their service, and in some of them, it's 30, 40 years worth of service that they've given to the county. Oh, yeah, it's just part of their job. But they've decided to transition into another part of their life, and I respect and appreciate that, and I respect the relationships I've had with each of those folks, and wanted to just congratulate them. And I hope that as they turn the page and they start reading in their new chapter, they're happy. So, that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'd like to... And I'd like to echo that. I am grateful for those guys who have worked for the county all these years and done good jobs, and we wish them well. All right, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept the consent items, or item like G-Gulf on our commission agenda as presented today.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent items are approved. Very good. Action items, Weber County ramp, Danette Pulli. You've had, you've been busy the last couple of weeks, haven't you? We've seen you up in those chambers, and some of those meetings are eight, nine hours long, and they're day after day, and you guys have worked your tail off.
Thank you. It's an honor and a privilege. I think I can speak on behalf of the ramp board members that are here to have the opportunity to serve on that board and to review the incredible projects and programs that the good people of Weber County and the municipalities within our county put forward to improve the quality of life that we have here.
So, two things. Number one, I want you to know that it's noticeable now. When you drive around the communities, you see parks, you see things going up, and this is, of course, what we voted, people voted to do. Secondly, would you introduce your board members that are here?
You bet, you bet. Before I do that, just want to, just thank you for the time today that we have to present the funding recommendations for your consideration and approval. And in addition to introducing my board members, I just want to first take a minute and thank the Weber County Commission staff, Shelley and Stacy, for the good work that they do, not only to prepare what we have to then come in on a very condensed timeline to review, but to all-year-long work to ensure that the reporting are filed correctly, that questions are answered by any of the ramp applicants, and they do a tremendous job and a huge lift between October and January to get ready for the ramp. So, just want to really publicly acknowledge you both for all the work that you do. Thank you.
You know, it's fun when we watch this starting to happen. Shelley goes out and she buys all these tubs, and we got all these tubs all around the office that she's putting all those applications in. It's really interesting to watch that and the time and effort that they put in. Thanks, Shelley.
And then with that, I'll have the ramp board members that are here stand, and just want to also thank them for the incredible work. There's actually a total of, let's see, 15 that we have, but I want to just take a minute and introduce. I'll just let Ann, and you start, introduce yourselves.
My name's Ann Perry. This is actually my sixth and final cycle here with ramp, so I appreciate the opportunity to have been here and been able to participate. It's been great.
My name is Steve Crane, and I like, also enjoyed this opportunity. It was pretty busy, but it's been fun work.
I'm currently done, complaints, yes, my fourth cycle.
Yeah, so, thank you, and I will say this before we get into some of the recommendations and a little bit of information and update on the overall funding for this year. The power in ramp really comes first in the collaboration in what it takes to put a ramp grant application forward, and the collaboration between nonprofits, cities, county citizens, and a tremendous in-kind with our private entities as well. And then to have the ramp board come and dedicate countless hours and really review line by line these grants, so that as we score them, there is a fair and transparent process in the way that these grants are scored, and then the funding recommendations that come out of it. So, it's a long few days, and the questions are thorough and comprehensive, and it's because of the diverse and collaborative nature that we're able to go through this process, and it is a, one that everyone on the ramp board takes seriously as we consider the administration of these tax funds. So, with that, I just want to make a quick, I know that we, for anyone at WACOG that was here last week, this may be a little redundant, but I know that you are all in Washington DC, so I just wanted to give you a quick update and overview. As you know, in both 2004 and 2014, the good citizens of Weber County approved the ramp tax, so that we could have a improvement to recreation, arts, museums, and parks in Weber County that would, of course, have and have had a tremendous impact on our quality of life. Ramp is funded by a sales tax of 1/10 of 1% for every penny spent in, oh, thank you. Thanks, Shelley. The average Weber County family invests about $12 per year in ramp. That $12 generates around $3 million per year, but you will see in just a minute that, and as you know, this year we had $4.4 million to invest back into the community through ramp. Ramp has been a tremendous example and really catalyst for creation and furthering of life quality. We have built a national and regional and local reputation for life quality based on the amenities and programs that ramp has been able to fund since 2004. For 2019, just for everyone's review, there was $3.9 million total amount of ramp tax collected. Each year, 1.5% of that is taken away for administrative services. $60,000 is withheld for EZ Grants, which will be reviewed later in the month of April, which left us with $3.8 million to administer for 2019 ramp grant funds. Because we have had some previous year unused funds, we added that back in, and that's where we got to the $4.4 million and some change.
So, when you have unused funds from previous years, are these funds that were allocated and then never, never...
Correct. Something about the nature of the project made it so that it couldn't be done as the way that it had been requested, and then they are returned and put back into the pool for the next year. That $4.4 million is then by ordinance divided between major grants and recreation and parks, and you can see the difference between what's requested and what we have to allocate. So, it does take a very thorough review and a very transparent and fair scoring process to ensure that the funds that are actually awarded are the best representation and projects that are viable and ready to move forward in our county. As I mentioned earlier, and we had a chance to interview, or to introduce, we have 15 community members that serve on three different committees for ramp. Each of those committees coincide with the funding between the majors, anything over $200,000, and then wrecks and parks and arts and museums. Just really quick, just speaking again to the transparent and objective review, every grant is, submits an application. Every one of those are scored by the ramp board independently as individuals, and then we come back together and discuss, and then enter our scores. There's a 100-point possibility on every ramp score, and then as each of those are scored and funding recommendations are made, once we're done, the average scores are sorted from high to low, and when the funding runs out, that's kind of where our cut line is. There are, if there's a big discrepancy, we make a cut line, or anything above that certain score is funded and below is not. So, with that, we'd like to present, respectfully present for your approval and consideration, the 2019 ramp award majors. You have a list in front of you as well. I don't know if you want me to go through each of them or just have them for a review, but there are six projects that are being presented for approval for a total of $2,297,670.
Do, questions, commissioners, on this?
No, I think we've looked, I've looked at these, so...
I'll have suggestions at the end. We get done.
Okay. In the parks and recreation, we have a total of 14 grant applications that were approved for the funding awards as listed, for a total of $530,052. I just will make note that the overage, meaning the amount of money allocated to wrecks and parks, was then approved unanimously by the ramp board to be reallocated to the majors, and so $801,598 overage was put back into major grants for awarding this year. Any questions on wrecks and parks?
No.
Okay, now, here's your I-chart. For arts and museums, there was a total of 47 programs and projects that received approval for funding at the amounts listed, for a total of $1,364,150.
You know, it's interesting to me, things happen around the community, and people don't give a second thought to it hardly. You know, a music thing here, a project here, and when you go down through here and you start looking at some of these, Chamber Orchestra, Ogden, it's like, oh, yeah, I remember hearing them guys over there. Well, that's where they get some of their funding from, for that. And you can go right down through there and see these. So, it's really cool what you are doing here. Questions, commissioners? Yes, Gage, go ahead.
No questions. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank not only our staff, Shelley and Stacy, because I saw the work they put in, but obviously the board, your board that dedicated a good share of hours in reviewing this, and I'm always a little suspicious of how tax dollars are spent from my history, and, and I've always been a little suspicious of how ramp funds are given out to certain institutions, arts and museums, and wanted, and never was convinced, never was close enough, that I felt that it was a fair process. I thought that maybe it was what we call inside baseball, if you knew somebody, you had your funds. I can say, at least from my perspective this year, looking at it, and the time you put in the board, and the allocation of funds, as I've reviewed your list, it appears to be equitable across the board in terms of distribution for cities and counties and projects, and the time you spend in to do that, I think can give some assurance to citizens of this county that that ramp tax is a, was a well-deserved tax. The question I did have for you, though, is you talked about the average Weber County family putting in $12 from sales tax. How much comes from outside? We have a lot of people that come in and visit our area, sometimes in the winter to ski, sometimes in the summer to see other things. How much comes in from outside the state? We always looked at that in certain...
Absolutely.
Certain areas in the state to see how much came in that we didn't have to provide services to, so I consider that to be a good source of funds. Do you have that?
We don't have that calculated, but I will say that's an excellent point, and the beauty of ramp tax is that because it is on sales tax, as we draw, and Weber County does, a tremendous amount of tourism to this county through the good work of Visit Ogden and the assets that we have to showcase and the programming that we do, a tremendous amount of ramp tax is funded by outside, you know, by visitors. And so, that calculation, I think we have had that in the past, but needs to be updated, and we can do that and report back. But that's a great call-out and point, that, that is the beauty of ramp, is we are able to improve our life quality through those that come and visit and the money that they spend here.
Yeah, exactly, and I think it cuts even in deeper, and obviously, I'm not a property tax advocate. I think that I'm a firm believer, have been for, since I've been able to talk about rev and tax, that use tax is the way that people should be able, or should have to contribute to their communities, and a sales tax is a primary use tax. So, we need to encourage that, take the, take the pain out of property tax. So, this is the proper place and the proper source of funds for this program. So, but again, thank you very much.
Yes.
You know, it's interesting, whoop, go back one.
Okay.
Well, one of the event, or one of the sites here that becomes a receiver of funds here is the Treehouse. You see it on there. And, you know, that's a, quite a little facility over there, and they just can't charge enough for these kids to make that, so they can operate, and here's $63,880 that goes to them to help them to stay alive. Well, that's one of those, I guess that's under museums. Well, it isn't under museums.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's, but a point of correction, it's, it's over 106,000, almost 130,000.
Two other blocks.
With the different programs.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, and it's the other things we do great here in Ogden. It's the Pioneer Days, and it's the old foam things. It's Dinosaur Park, it's Hooper City, some of their celebrations, and ballet, and, and periods Egyptian theater, and the Weber School Foundation, and about everything you can think of that happens in our town is touched in some way or another by, by the volunteers who serve on this ramp committee. And I'd like to speak to that before we take a vote, but now, but is now, well, I don't know if she's done with her presentation.
I just want, one more, one more thing for you to understand, and that is, each year as ramp transpires, we learn a great deal, as we do with everything in life, is the more time we have in it. And one of the things that we have over the last couple of years with ramp, talked a lot about on the board, is the accountability for the taxpayer dollars. And with that, we have implemented stricter audit and reporting requirements. And I just want you to know that we are holding entities accountable for the reporting of the funds, and that does now include research, receipts for the funds that ramp was given, not the whole project, but they are being asked to provide proof of purchase and receipt for anything that ramp specifically funded, so that we do have a full accountability on how those funds are used. And with that, that also means a report. And that's always been part of it, but there is a reduction of points for grants if the grants that they have received in the past have not been reported back on, because we do feel strongly about the way the tax dollar's being used and the programs and projects that ramp is helping to support. So, we do want to thank the audit team here at Weber County and legal review as well for the work that they do to help ensure that the funding is being reported on in the best way possible and that there's accountability. So, that's really my last slide. If there's any additional questions before, or comments before you guys take motion on the recommendations from the board.
You, for years being associated with the county, I've watched the evolution of the ramp project and what it's turned into. Jeremy, and Steve, and Ann, and Danette, as you represent that team here today, it's with great appreciation. We appreciate your service. Not one of you have received any money or compensation financially for your service, and it's hundreds of hours. We talk about the time that we see them in the office, and the time that the containers are prepared for presentation, and just those times there. But there's also all the time that's spent out of the office, meeting with the applicants, making sure that the criterias are met, making sure that not only are they meeting the necessary minimum qualifications for the project, but then following up on the backside and holding them accountable for taxpayer dollars. And you've done this away from work, family, many things, so that you could serve the county. To this, I want to tell you thank you for making a difference in the lives of the grandchildren of your grandchildren, because many of these things will be around the decisions you made. So, from us as a commission, I'd like to give them...
I agree, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay.
Well, very good. Thank you very much, Danette. We appreciate that presentation.
Mr. Chair, you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Thank you. It'd be my pleasure to make the motion to approve, as submitted by the ramp committee, accepting their recommendations for the 2019 budget.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a second. That is very good. I want to thank you myself for a, accept the, or we take a vote on this. It's been really, it's really interesting, and to hear somebody like Gage, who self-admittedly is cautious when it comes to tax dollars, you know, be positive here. I agree, this is, this is one of those deals where the citizens chose to tax themselves for specific use, and it's our responsibility to administer that, to make sure it's done right. You guys have done a great job in doing that. that, to make sure it's done right. You guys have done a great job in doing that. And I think the results show themselves around the community. So I'm grateful for this. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Very good. It has passed, and another successful year. Thank you. Very good. Next item is approval of policy four-dash-three-hundred, insurance and reinvest, or retirement benefit. Christopher Crockett, we have you make a presentation there, talk a little bit about that.
Sure.
What this four-dash-three-hundred does.
Thank you, commissioners. Our human resources director, Sarah Swan.
Hold on just a second. Carrie, pay attention. Okay, go ahead.
Sarah Swan is out of town, traveling today, and asked if I could present this for her. This is a proposal to modify human resources policy four-dash-three-hundred, which relates to insurance and retirement benefits. The provision specifically relates to elected officials related to the post-retirement insurance incentive, that is offered to county employees. The provision, the proposed language reads, it's one sentence states, "The same benefits and eligibility rules offered to Weber County employees will apply to all elected officials." And in seeing the number of members of the public who have come and expressed an interest in this item, and then also those who may be watching online, I thought it would be helpful to provide a couple of minute procedural history to help understand what that new language in the policy would mean. In researching this issue, I looked back and I could find that the creation of the Weber County Retirement Incentive Policy was first passed in 2007. The reason stated in the policy for its passing was, it states, "This policy is enacted to facilitate the retirement of employees who desire to retire when they are eligible to retire under the state retirement system, and who may choose not to retire because of the loss of health and dental insurance coverage." So the original policy, as it was drafted in 2007, had a number of provisions. It was applicable to only employees who were hired prior to January first, 2008. And then also, you had to have at least twenty years of service under, that would be qualified by the Utah retirement system. As part of that policy, those who retired prior to sixty would receive the equivalent of, they would continue on the county's health insurance program and continue to receive those benefits. If they hired after the age of sixty but before sixty-five, they would continue receiving health insurance coverage until the age of sixty-five. And then the number of years remaining in that five-year allotment would be put in, those premiums would be put into a health reimbursement account, which the individual could draw upon to pay for qualified medical expenses. And if you retired after the age of sixty-five, you would receive five years' worth of premiums put in that health reimbursement account. There was also a provision in that 2007 policy that related to elected officials. First, it tied elected officials to people, eligible retirees. And in order to be an eligible, an elected official who's eligible under that program, you had to have served eight years and completed your term of office in good standing. And if the elected official had done that, they would receive those five years of health insurance. Now, that policy was modified in 2014, and it was modified in two different ways. First, the requirement to serve eight years was reduced to four years. And then the second change that was made to the policy is that an option was added for elected officials as an alternative to having those premiums placed in a medical expense reimbursement account was to receive a cash equivalent payout for the five years of health insurance premiums. Now, during the budget process for the 2017 year, and this was the same year that the proposed property tax increase was being discussed, in looking at the minutes and the reason when this policy was brought up, it was addressed again to, in an effort to reduce the percentage of the property tax increase that was going to happen, the policy was modified so that it would be phased out over time. So beginning on December thirty-first, 2021, the benefit that was available to all employees is the general benefit, would begin to be reduced at that time, and then was scheduled to be completely eliminated by December thirty-first, 2026. In researching this, it was discovered that that modification only related to the general employees. It did not change the elected official provision. And so in August of 2018, the policy was modified again to phase out the elected official provision benefit. So it would follow the same schedule of going from, starting in 2021, to be phased out over time and eventually eliminated completely by 2026. There was, however, still the option to receive the cash payout in lieu of receiving a medical expense reimbursement account. And so now, that kind of brings you to why the, the policy is again being proposed to be changed with that one-sentence provision, that the same benefits and eligibility rules that are offered to county employees in general under the policy will also apply to elected officials.
Well, Chris, the very next item is approved payments to Terry Thompson and James Ebert. I want, in, in regards to this, I want you to read the statement in there that existed before, because the question's been asked, why we, why the checks were sent out before we approved them. And I want him to understand why that happened and the way that happened.
The statement as, from the policy that existed currently?
Talked in there about upon acceptance of a contract.
Correct.
Read that. It's just a single sentence.
Sure. The current policy, as it stands right now, there is a section in there entitled "Retirement Contract Investing." It relates to how the policy can be changed and who has legal rights to enforce the benefits under the policy. This states, "This policy may be changed at any time for any reason by the Board of County Commissioners. However, every eligible retiree who qualifies to retire from county employment in accordance with his policy shall enter into an agreement with the county defining the obligations of the county and the eligible retiree upon final execution of that contract. The benefits described in the contract shall be deemed to be vested."
Okay, so Carrie, to your question earlier, what happens is that contract, we have the responsibility to send out. So I'm not going to argue whether it was right or wrong. I'm going to tell you what the county did. And so the county has, has taken the policy of when these individuals retire, they send that contract out with the check. So the person who receives that has two choices. He can send the check back and not sign it, or he can sign it and keep the check. And when they sign that, that fulfills that statement in there that says they accept that contract. And all, I know, I'm just telling you, that's the way we've done it in the past.
I realize that that's the way you've done it in the past.
Okay.
But I'm just saying that's not what the policy says. It says when it's fully executed, which to me is, I see Ricky Hatch's signature on there, I see Sarah's signature on there, I see the retiree's signature on there, and I see the approval, which, again, has the way you voted on how, on the approval. Again, that's approval of that contract. So I don't believe that that's a fully executed meets the definition of a fully executed contract until all those names are on there.
We agree with that.
And I would never, I'd place it
And those names are on there, finally, at the signature of the person receiving the contract.
And there is one clarification I would like to make. In researching this issue, that provision applies to eligible retirees. And looking at the language that was used to, regarding elected officials, there's additional language in there that states when an elected official is qualified to receive that benefit. One of the options is if the, if they retire, officially retire. The other option is if they leave office in good standing. And in researching case law regarding this issue, it comes down, the courts have interpreted based on general principles of contract law. And so the retirement benefit that the county put forth was, it constitutes an offer. So the critical point in time in evaluating this issue is when does an individual have the ability to accept that offer? And given the additional language of either retire or leave office in good standing, it was our office's conclusion that there is a legally vested interest by fulfilling the terms of office and leaving office in good standing with those two individuals.
I have, again, my issue here is, counsel has a conflict of interest because he's also eligible for this program.
I am not.
You're not eligible for the retirement center program?
I'm not an elected official.
No, no.
And I am also, I
As an employee of Weber County, are you eligible for this policy?
I was hired after January first, 2008, and so I am not eligible for this program.
Again, I think that, again, the department, an outside counsel would be the appropriate way to get an opinion on this, whether or not the contract is fully executed or not. Because again, I think that there are people in the, in fact, in the office that have taken advantage of this, you know, county attorney's office, who have taken advantage of this program. And again, it is, an outside counsel would be the proper way, and I suggested that when I wrote my article. I said, it needs to come from the outside, not from the internal.
We've rendered our, we, I disagree that there would be a conflict of interest, and we've rendered our opinion, but I believe the commissioners have also saw additional opinions outside in addition to the ones we have, the one we have rendered.
All right. Well, anyway, so there's your answer, like it or not, that, you know, that's, that's where we've gone with this. And so with that in mind, item number two, policy four-dash-three-hundred is before us, and this will effectively kill that from here on out, this day forward. So Commissioner Fror, you are the one that's really, really pushed this, and of course, we've, we've joined with you. We agree. But would you like to make a motion here?
Well, I'm going to leave the motion for a second to be
Okay.
I have a couple of questions of clarification, if I might.
Too bad. Absolutely. Go ahead.
I think it's important that this be discussed. And, and let me just say this, I appreciate both you, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Harvey, allowing me the privilege of kind of delving into this. I felt this was a very important issue for the citizens of the county. I appreciate the work of our legal staff and explaining, you know, why we are where we are today. But a couple of things that are still unresolved, at least in my mind, that have been asked, and I'm going to ask Mr. Crockett if there was any intent language, or what the intent of that change in 2014 was. Why, why did they make this shift to differentiate between elected and general employees, and why did they shift it from eight to four years? If, was there specific intent or a reason for that, or do you know?
What I have available are the minutes from that meeting. I have a copy of those, if you want me to read those, but from, I could not gather the specific intent from the minutes as to why they made a change to reduce the term limit, and then also to provide the option to receive a cash payment.
Okay. And so really, as we cut through all the legalese in this policy, what this does, it puts the elected officials back on the same level with the general Weber County employee. So we're going to, we would be treated the same from here on out, for those that would qualify for health insurance after a certain period of time.
Correct. You would be subject to the same rules and same eligibility requirements.
Okay. And the final question I have, and maybe we can get Paige up here, that still is somewhat unresolved in my mind, and being the new guy on the block, maybe I just need to understand this a little better. So why are we asked, if, if in fact, the, these checks were executed by contract, which has been suggested by our legal attorney, which I happen to believe, after looking at some state statutes and talking to some people at the state about that exact issue, why are we asked to approve something at this commission level after the checks have gone out? I mean, it's been a long time since I've been in business school, but it hasn't been that long since I've run a business or worked with the state. It seems just backwards to me that we're asked to approve something after a check's been signed. I knew if somebody was working for me, at either the state or my private business, and said, approve this check, and they've already cashed the check, I would not be happy.
Absolutely.
So can you explain that? I did receive, in all fairness, I asked Sarah Swan that same question, and she said, well, that's the way that we've always done it. And I communicated to her, in all fairness, that, well, in my opinion, at least, if I have my vote, that's in a stop. So can you explain why we were doing that and where we are in the future?
Absolutely.
Is that procedure going to be stopped, or are we going to continue to do it?
It already has been stopped. So one of the, and we, and one of the retirement contracts that was on your consent item is the first one that you will see. And so the process has already been changed, and payouts will not be made until after you guys have seen those contracts. The reason that was decided was before my capacity here, so unfortunately, I can't tell you why that was decided to have that process be what it is. But it has been changed already.
So that, I'm assuming that would apply in all contracts, just not retirement contracts?
Yes.
Any contracts before have to be authorized by us, they fit the budget. So we're going to do what I would call good business manage, money management procedures?
Yep, absolutely.
And you guys would be on board with that?
We are.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chair, that answers my question.
Thank you. So while we're on that, Lynn, that goes a little bit to you guys, too. We, here a while back, I had some payments held, and I really upset the apple cart when I did that, because the checks had already been mailed. You remember that? And, yeah, well, anyway, they said that we'd have to get some, cancel some check payments, and it was a big deal. And so I was of the opinion that that has also happened now, that those checks aren't sent out until after we approve them.
That's my understanding, is that, once the warrants and everything else have been approved, one of the first items that happened is those go out to the people that cut those, so they know those have been approved.
All right. Well, that's good. I feel like we've made some really good changes here, and this is the way it should take place.
May I?
Yes.
Just to speak a little bit to that, for, since 1994, having gone through the county's process of when checks go out, and the release of checks, there was a process in place where an early release had to be signed in advance by commissioners before a check was released. Sometime before I came in 2000, January first, 2017, a practice had begun, and I couldn't put a date to it, when this check either would go out there or go to retirement. I can't answer that question. The question that was brought up here about process is being changed. Process, as Gage required, and business process, we don't, we sign and execute a contract first, and then do the payment. That's how, and for whatever existed, whatever got changed prior, somehow that did, it's stopped now. We've identified the problem, we've stopped the problem. There's no question, and I appreciate, I appreciate Commissioner Fror and, and his, his business savvy, as well as Commissioner Jenkins, but for whatever reason is, is explained in the minutes, and when this policy was first out, put out in 2014, it's bad policy. It's wrong. And it's, it's not going to continue. The cash payout was wrong. We all, we all work for Weber County. We all work for Weber County. We just have different jobs. So an elected official being treated different than anybody else is wrong, in my book. And, and so that's the way we're, we're operating from, at least today, having one of these meetings over an executed policy that'll be signed going forward. That's how that'll be. So I say that, I look, I'm sorry to just look at you, but I say that to the whole crowd, anyone who might be listening, future. I've said that for the last two and a half years. We all work for Weber County. We just have different jobs. But then there are those that we get to volunteer, right, Danette? Thank you. Yeah, so with that, Chair, I'd Yeah, so, with that, Chair, I'd ready to make a motion, if you'd be seen.
Go ahead, absolutely.
I'll make a motion that we approve item number two on the contract, which is a request for approval of the change for policy four dash three hundred for the insurance and retirement benefits, three, dash three, two, I'm a little bit, because our notes are a little different, but it's policy four dash three hundred for all intent purposes.
Very good. Motion.
I'll second that.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hundred percent unanimous. Very good. So, next item on there is the approval of the retirement benefit for Terry Thompson and Charles Ebert, which is James. So, as was stated earlier, they have those checks, they signed them, and they've sent that agreement, that contract back to us. So, that's where we are today. Gage, go ahead.
So, a question again for legal.
Commissioner Fror should say, I'm sorry.
I'll take either one.
I don't mean to be so casual.
Explain to me, if you will, what happens if we were not to vote in favor of this?
It is my opinion that there would be a legal cause of action that these two individuals could bring against the county to enforce their rights under this policy in court.
So, it could result in a lawsuit?
Yes.
What's the probability of that?
Of them succeeding?
Yes.
Very high, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is where we are, not by our own move, so one, it's a hand that was dealt to us by previous legislative bodies here.
By the 2014 Act, yeah.
We nonetheless find ourselves in that position.
As much as I, as much as I hate to, but I, we are at a point then, then, sorry, I'm having to go back to the agenda.
Okay.
I'll make the motion then that we approve the contracts for the elective service benefits as described in item three.
There's a motion.
I'll second that, so we can bring it to a vote.
Now, there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
I'll lead up, I-
I'm gonna abstain.
No. No.
Okay.
It dies. If we're not unified in this, I don't wanna go forward.
And I'll retract my, I'll retract my, yeah, and I understand that.
Let's think about this for a minute, move on. Next item up is item number four, resolution number fourteen, for County Commissioners of Weber County, appointing new members to the Ogden Park, Ogden Valley Park District. Stacy?
Hello, Commissioners. I received a notice from the Ogden Valley Park District Board that two of their members were expiring, December 31st of 2018. The notice was posted according to state statute. I received seven applications for the two positions who expired. On your resolution, you will see that there is, it looks like there's a third appointment to be made, but that will be made in the future with a Huntsville recommendation after an inter-local agreement has been made. So, you've got two positions to appoint or reappoint.
Very good. Commissioner Harvey, do you have a point to be made here?
I've looked over the applications, and they all, you know, again, I appreciate people who are willing to serve, especially in volunteer positions. There are two positions that are, had experience up there, and I would make the motion unless, Gage, this is in your wheelhouse, if you have some questions, but I'm ready to make a recommendation from my perspective.
Please do.
I'd make a recommendation that we appoint Brent Christensen and Mike Rhodes back to that commission.
They've served previously?
They have.
Okay. All right, I don't have any questions there. Commissioner Fror, you?
I'd second that, but just wanna also echo what Commissioner Harvey, as I looked through those applications, we had several applications, very qualified people, I know most of the people that did make, did apply for that position, and I would agree that those two people have been on the board before. I see that there's, in December 31st, 2020, there'll be some opportunities to appoint some other people. In speaking with the, the chair of that park board, he felt it was very critical that they're just getting this started, so it's, and I think Mr. Rhodes is the vice chair, it would be important to keep that continuity going, at least for the, for the near future. So, I support that motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, roll call.
Oh, that's right, this is a roll call, I'm sorry, Fatah, pardon me.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Fror?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
And then, did you state who those names were?
I did, but I'll state again for the record, just to, Michael Rhodes and Brent Christensen.
Okay, right, I didn't hear it. Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Stacy, we appreciate that. Request for an approval of interlocal agreement between Weber County, by and between Weber County, and the following entities for the Golden Spike Stormwater Coalition. We'll turn this over to Blaine Franzen, but the, the cities that are listed are Far West, Plain City, that's a new one, isn't it?
Yes.
And Pleasant View and West Haven.
Yes, sir.
So, Blaine, go ahead.
These are the next four interlocal agreements in a series of about seventeen agreements between the various cities in Weber County that are classified as a MS4 city, that's multiple stormwater sewer system permittee with the county. That permits, allows the cities and the county to basically discharge stormwater into the natural waters of the state. This agreement basically provides funding for the coalition, the Golden Spike Stormwater Coalition of, for member cities, to fund the hiring of a professional manager for the coalition. That is being done basically to relieve the members of the coalition that are all staff members of various cities, so that it doesn't take them so much away from their responsibilities at each city.
Thanks, Blaine. You know, this year, depending on what happens in the next few weeks, I mean, we're right where we wanna be now.
Yes.
But you don't know what the storms are gonna bring in the next two or three weeks, so it'll be interesting to see. You might actually have this group working right away.
Well, they're already working, we're almost at the halfway point, once we break the halfway point in a number of cities, we probably have the funding to be able to proceed with the RFP for the hiring act. So, hopefully, within the next few weeks, that will cross that horizon and be able to proceed.
Very good. All right, questions, Commissioners, either of you?
No.
This is a, this is something that we've been working on for the last couple of years, we started a couple of years ago, and, and basically, it addresses, you know, as our county continues to grow, especially east of Washington Boulevard, there's more hardscape and less places for water to absorb in the ground. Goes into pipes, pipes end up out where we are, the mayors, western Weber County, and we, this is, so we evolve with the evolution of the growth.
Yes.
Very simple, so, me or you, I, however.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve item number five in contract with the respective cities.
Very good, a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Commissioners, those are resolutions fifteen-
Well, that is, go ahead.
Fifteen through eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Fror?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Blaine. All right, next one is a request for approval and amendments to an interlocal agreement between Weber County and South Ogden City regarding the South Ogden Auto Mall Community Reinvestment Project. Mrs. Hall and Will Banks?
Hello. In October of 2017, Weber County entered into an agreement with South Ogden City for an interlocal, for a community reinvestment project area. We vetted that project at the time in 2017, and were ready to put it into action, and realized there was a typo in the original contract for the effective date. So, essentially, today, we're just cleaning that up and making a correction to the contract so that it is now effective, the dates that we intended it to originally be effective, which would be 2019 to 2030. As this correction came back, the amendment came back through us, we did have our legal teams and our finance team relook at the agreement to ensure the continuity, continuity in the original agreement. However, this is just cleaning up the original contract. I do have Matt Dixon here from South Ogden City, and I thank him for being here for this commission meeting. If you have any questions for South Ogden, he's here as well, otherwise, that's pretty much the overview of this item.
Questions, Commissioners?
No, if you're ready for a motion?
Yes, I'm ready.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the request for the amendment to interlocal agreement regarding the South Ogden Auto Mall, and I can just state that I have reviewed that contract with Ms. Will Banks, and it looks like it's just a minor amendment that this was actually approved prior to it, so.
Yes, sir.
Very good, a motion I have.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. Very good. Next item is a request for an ordinance of Weber County governing the use of fees obtained from the recreational areas of Pine View and Cozy Resorts. Hall, back to you.
So, this goes back to the use of Pine View and Cozy Reservoir areas and the recreation therein and around it. Over the past few years, the Weber County has worked closely with the, the citizens of the Upper Valley, the users of the recreation, and especially the U.S. Forest Service, and I wanna thank Sean Harwood for being here as well, and so, if we have any questions from him, he is the district ranger for the Forest Service in this area. I'm really excited to present this ordinance today. We've made some significant changes on how we manage and work with the Forest Service and how their, their ability to manage and recreate and improve the, the overall experience as more and more users recreate around Pine View and Cozy. And that's not just the boaters, but it's our trails, it's our horsemen, the beachgoers across the board, the number of people has increased exponentially year over year, and so, we've really had to, to make sure that we protect the waterways and protect the experience that our users have. So, this essentially allows us, the county has set up a restricted account, any fees collected that fall under the, this, the guidelines in this ordinance, which include any sort of usage fees that the county's able to collect, any sort of parking fees that we might potentially collect, any sort of other recreational fees that would be surrounding, those two body ways would go into this, into this restricted account. The restriction on this account is that the uses for those fees that are collected in that area will be strictly given and used for improvements back to Pine View and Cozy Reservoir areas. I think that's a very important step as we are using the fees that are generated from the area, specifically going back to that area where those fees are coming from. So, that is what this ordinance is about today. If you have any other questions for myself or Sean, we'll be glad to answer them.
You know, it was interesting, I think Sean made the comment, Mr. Harwood, the other day, that we're getting to a point where we're loving that place to death.
Right.
And I was very interested to find out that the number one group of people that use Pine View are from Davis County, and that the number two group of users is from Salt Lake County. So, Weber County is really third in the line of the people who use that facility. So, anyway, I'm, I've reviewed this, and I'm pleased with it. Do any of you, either of you have, Gage?
I'm very pleased with it, too. You know, obviously, this is kind of in my backyard as well, in both these spots, and I think we all understand that Ogden Valley is a place you wanna be in the summer, and for some of us, the winter, too, but a lot of people enjoy the, both the reservoirs, and, and that's great. We want, we welcome them, and it's a, it's a public resource that should be used. At the same time, we need to make sure that that's managed well so that it doesn't impact in too negative sense the residents that live up there year-round, traffic, garbage, et cetera, and I appreciate the Forest Service in their involvement in this, to make sure that this can maintain a stature with, statute with the public, that they can continue to use it, and that the people that go up there can enjoy it rather than go up there and have a bad experience. And so, it's just the nature of the times that, because of the increased traffic from wherever, we're gonna have to deal with these issues, and it's unfortunate, I can tell you, fifty years ago, it wasn't quite like that, but we're not in that same territory today, so we have to take different steps to make sure that we can still have enjoyment of those, of those natural assets, and I appreciate your work on it, Hall.
You know, there's a lot of, I've been here all my life, but I don't, I've never remembered in my twenty-five years at Weber County how good the relationship's been between Weber County and the Forest Service, and I think squarely that points to Sean Harwood, and I really appreciate you, Sean, and what you've done. You have made a big difference, and I know Sean and I have known each other for a lot of, lot of years, and he's, he really cares about our area, and because he cares so deeply, he's been able to make positive changes that will affect us for a long time. Thank you, Sean.
Very good. I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve item seven, I believe it is, under action items, approval of the ordinance for the County Commissioner of Weber County governing the recreation area of Pine View and Cozy.
You still wanna hold it?
Ordinance number four. Is that it?
Uh-huh.
That'd be my motion, Mr. Chair.
With second?
Second?
Wouldn't this be a first reading?
You still wanna hold that?
Oh, first reading.
First reading.
We still vote on it, though, right?
Still vote.
Yes.
Go ahead, Fatah. Is this roll call?
Well, I mean, no, not a roll.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good, it passed unanimously, thanks.
Thank you.
Request, next is request for a contract to Weber County Pacific Mobile Diagnostics to provide x-ray, ultrasound, EKG, and the echocardiogram services to inmates of Weber County Jail. Mr. Perry.
Commissioners, thank you.
Aaron Perry.
Yes, sir. So, the Weber County Jail contracts with a third-party provider to provide mobile diagnostic services for, for inmates, this is a significant cost savings to the alternative, which is having to transport them to a hospital for those services, and oftentimes, we take an x-ray and, and it's clear, and we don't, we don't have to pay for those extra costs. What drove this change was our previous provider discontinued services in the state of Utah. So, we were, we sent this out to RFP and want to award the contract to Pacific Mobile Diagnostics. They actually came in a little bit smaller, or had a decrease in the price, so a little bit of cost savings in the per-service price, so this contract is per-service. So, it's per x-ray, per ultrasound, per EKG, so there's a set standard price when we request them to come in, and we're not requesting any change to the budget with this.
Great, questions?
I have no questions, Commissioner.
How about a motion?
Okay, great, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract. Number eight is presented by Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. We appreciate the Sheriff's Department, what you guys do. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes. Item nine.
Well, just when you think it was safe to go outside.
That's right. Is approval of law enforcement agreement between Weber County and the Forest Service, USDA Forest Service, modifying the 2019 operating plan and final plan. Brandon Roundy.
Morning, Commissioners. Yeah, this plan is basically, it's a renewal, it started back in September of 2016, it's an agreement between the Forest Service and Weber County Sheriff's Office to fund patrolling aspects of the Sheriff's Office and Forest Service area. It's a modification, and from my understanding, is that any balance that we don't use carries over to the next year, so the modification is the amount they fund for the next year, and it totals up to be forty-eight thousand dollars. Last year, a carryover was one dollar and fifty-five cents, so the current obligation is forty-seven thousand, nine ninety-eight, and forty-five cents. This helps us patrol campgrounds, Forest Service roads, high recreation areas up in the Forest Service, and helps reimburse us for that. So, this is pretty important in our patrol aspects and funding that up there, and working with the Forest Service, and just like to get this passed so we can get back to work.
Questions?
No. If you're ready for a motion, I would move to approve Agenda Item Nine, request for approval of law enforcement agreement between Weber County and operating plan and financial plan as presented by the Sheriff's Department.
A second. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's passed. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
You bet. Well, big agenda today. Go to the third page. Request for approvals of contracts to Weber County and Young Electric Sign Company, LLC, for design, fabrication, and sign installation services. Scott Mendoza. You're kind of the guy on these, aren't you?
Become that way, yeah. It's been a pleasure to work on these projects. So commissioners, thanks, and thank you for taking a few minutes to consider these next two contracts. The project that we're working out there on has to do with building a business identification sign that will have three individual tenant spaces, one for the Weber County Sheriff's Office, one for the Weber Valley Youth Center, and one for Weber County. And this first contract with YESCO Sign Company basically commits YESCO to assisting the county with, just as you said, Commissioner, designing the sign, fabricating, and ultimately installing that sign out there at about, well, it's on the southwest corner of the intersection of 12th Street and Depot Drive. In the contract, Weber County is committing to pay YESCO $53,005 for their services and perform additional work such as excavation and backfill, providing electrical service to the installation site, and providing some lighting controls that will operate the lights within the sign itself. So again, this contract is for $53,005 with YESCO to construct a sign at about 709 West 12th Street.
Questions?
Commissioner, I've had a little bit of experience with signs and a lot of them, and this is actually something, as you look at, as you look at signs, there's a cost that's less than what I anticipated being in the first place based on square footage and the other things that are being put into the sign. So I'd yield to Commissioner Faur, unless you're ready to accept a motion.
I just, let me just clarify, though. So, you know, we know that the juvenile detention's owned by the state, but I just see here in the bottom of this notes that the state isn't a pay portion of that. So basically, we splitting that a third, third, and a third?
That's exactly right.
Between the sheriffs and state and county, which I think is good. Yeah, I don't see that we should pay the whole thing, but, and there will be, when you say there'll be a Weber County portion of that, what purpose does that serve?
That's a space that will be left blank for the time being. The, well, Lot One of the Detention Center subdivision out there is currently vacant.
The five acres. Yeah, I'm fairly familiar with that.
I'm sure.
And I think it's Lot, you know, it may be Lot One that's vacant. Lot Two is currently occupied by the youth center.
So the good opportunity for us to sell that site, and then maybe we can skip our $17,000 back for that portion of that sign.
There you go.
Okay, I forgot my question.
And more. Do you want to make a motion?
I'd make the motion that we approve Agenda Item Ten for approval of contract between Weber County and YESCO for the design and installation of that sign on West 12th Street.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Next item is request for approval of resolution adopting an interlocal agreement buying between Weber County and the Utah Department of Human Services, Division of Juvenile Services regarding construction of a sign near the intersection of Depot Drive and 12th Street. This is different.
This is a different contract. It's a resolution that you'll consider accepting or approving. This is an interlocal agreement with the Division of Juvenile Justice Services, or DJJS, who currently operates that youth facility on that property there out on Depot Drive. Commissioners, with this contract, the state, again, Commissioner Faur, you pointed that out earlier, and noticed that the state's willing to contribute $18,875 towards this sign. In the contract, they're also committing to maintain their own tenant space just in case letters fade, or there's a crack in the materials that make up the sign, but they've committed to maintain their own space and participate in any major repairs if, in some event, there are major repairs needed. So they're committing to contributing up to a third and participate in things like that. The county in this contract, the county's basically committing to provide routine maintenance on the sign, just ongoing routine maintenance, and guarantee that the state will always have access to the sign even if the county in the future decides to sell that property that's currently owned by the county. I was going to mention that the Sheriff's Office in this case, they're willing to contribute to the sign as well in the amount of $17,065. So really, overall, the county's contributing about $17,000 for a $53,000 sign contract. So with the partners that the county has in this, it's working out very well.
Well, Scott, on that intersection where we're talking about the sign, on the east side of that intersection, do we own any property there?
Yes, there's a small parcel that's currently occupied by a detention pond or basin.
But at the front of that, where it makes, you know, you turn right in where a sign would be, don't we own a little sliver right there also?
Are you talking, would this be the southeast corner of that intersection?
It would be the southeast corner. That's correct.
Yeah. We looked at possibly locating a sign there, but the engineers, when they designed the road, designed, you know what, in this case, it is a detention pond. It's a small one, but it takes up enough room there that the sign probably wouldn't be very feasible.
Okay, that's good. So you looked at that.
Yeah.
All right, answer my question.
Scott, one additional question. So this would go on the entire parcel, Lot One, as we talk about it now?
Yes, the lot.
Are we reserving, so how are we handling the legal description of that sign site? Are we, you didn't pull that out of Lot One, or you didn't reserve an easement? How you didn't handle that legally for a sign for the future?
Great question. We've been giving that a lot of thought, and we're considering, well, the county is considering doing an amendment on that lot right now. The amendment is needed so the county can convey or dedicate land to UDOT for road purposes. But while the county's doing that, what's been considered is on the plat, on that dedication plat, showing an easement, an access easement for others within that subdivision, or the county could consider just executing a separate document, an easement.
Yeah. And I'd suggest you do that upfront, make that amendment at some point in time. That property may be sold, may be there forever, but, you know, you might as well deal with that now.
Yeah, we'd like to get that. And my opinion is, if we can show it on a plat, it's much easier for everybody to find.
It is. It just solves future problems.
Yeah.
I've been there, done it, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Great.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Item Number 11, as presented by Mr. Mendoza, about the Depot Drive and the 12th Street sign.
Resolution nineteen.
It's a resolution.
Nineteen.
Number nineteen. So I have a motion?
Second.
And a second.
Sorry.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Faur?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioners, thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Scott, for your efforts, sir. Item Number 12 is request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Outdo Janitorial Services for the Weber County Property Management. Bryce Taylor. Bryce?
Yes, good afternoon. This is a contract that we sent out with, or, excuse me, a bid that we put out, the cleaning of the Weber Center, the property management office, oil community development office, and the USU Extension Office, which is out at the Golden Spike Event Center. Put this out to an RFP and got all of them back, and this is the contract to go with them.
Questions on?
No questions.
Nope, I'm good.
No, no questions.
Motion?
Motion to approve Item Number 12, as presented by Mr. Taylor.
Second?
Second.
And a second. I have a motion, a second. Any other conversation or questions?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thanks, Bryce. Next is request for approval of interlocal agreement funding, a funding agreement between Weber County and North Ogden City. Brooke Stewart.
Thanks for having me, commissioners.
You bet, Brooke.
Yep, before you, today is a local transportation funding agreement for the North Ogden City 404-50 East Corridor Preservation Project. Just to provide you with a little bit of history concerning this project, in 2014, North Ogden City came and applied for the local transportation funds for corridor preservation to preserve the corridor along 450 East from 2,600 North to 3,300. They submitted the application, and that application was approved for recommendation and awarded as part of the priority list that the commission adopted in 2014. The award was for $596,160. At that time, North Ogden City had applied for two projects and had received some funding for the Skyline Drive project. After some consideration, the city decided that they wanted to focus on their priority project, which was the 404-50 East, and so they had come back to the cog and asked them if they could transfer funds from the second project to the first. Wake Cog expressed some concerns about that, and we've enacted a policy since that projects cannot transfer funds within each other. And so the mayor did withdraw that request and came back and reapplied for additional funding in 2015. In 2015, Wake Cog and the county commission did approve an additional $2,250,000 in corridor preservation funds. So this agreement before you is to establish the terms related to that total funding amount of $2,846,160 for them to preserve the corridor along that 450 East project. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I've reviewed this thoroughly in advance, and this, again, is just the progress, and so there'll be, you know, this is a nice step, but it's going to create a lot more, we'll use the word opportunity, for North Ogden City in the future.
It's a good project. There's other partners involved, it'll be a good project, good improvements.
I also appreciate Mr. Stewart taking the time to explain this project and contract. And with that, I'd make a motion to approve Action Item 13, as presented by Ms. Stewart, local transportation between Weber County and North Ogden City.
I have a motion.
And a second?
And a second. Any other questions? Or if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
Thanks, Brooke.
Item 14 is approval of a contract to Weber County and Myrtle Knight for the purchase of property on West 12th Street. It doesn't say West, but I'm assuming that is. Gary Myers, you want to explain that to us?
Be happy to. Thanks for giving me a second to go over these with you. This is one of the last few remaining properties we've needed to acquire along 12th Street. It's a strip take along the front edge of their property that fronts 12th Street. As you're aware, it's currently under construction. It's just been a long, ongoing process of back and forth between what they want to request, what it's worth, appraisals, attorneys, all of that that comes along with it. So we're finally ready to get this wrapped up and to get them taken care of and signed. Any questions on this one?
Questions, commissioners?
Did you say this was the last parcel?
One of the last. Two more after this one.
Okay, so you're coming to the end of the roll on this?
We are trying as hard as we can, pushing where we can.
Gary, we appreciate your efforts.
You bet.
Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve Item Number 14 under the Action Items, contract between Weber County and the Knight family on the West 12th Street project.
Second. All right, I have a motion, a second. Leave nothing else to be said. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. You're done.
Thanks, gentlemen. I'll actually cover this last one, too, if I could, for Jared.
You bet. So the last one is a request for approval on change order number two, buying between Weber County and B&amp;H Incorporated, addressing new issues. So, you know, I reviewed that contract. That's all fencing.
There's a couple things going on there. There's fencing, there's, you know, as many of you are familiar with, once you start digging, you encounter things that nobody knew about that, for all we know, somebody's grandfather put in the ground to address something. Construction is always kind of a fluid movement. There's always, I've never yet to see a construction project without change orders. So there's fencing, there's drainage, there's, as we've worked and interacted with the farmers, there's ways that they've suggested that we can change and improve the way things work and things drain out there. And so what we did, let me back up just a little bit. This is change order number two. Change order number one never actually came before the commission because it was directed entirely at West Warren Water. All changes and costs that they were, they bore the cost of. So that's why it's number two. Secondly, what happened is, is we started to encounter all these small, little things. Rather than come before you with 15 different change orders, we kind of lumped them all into one package. And that's why, as you go through there, there will be lots of different cover sheets and locations to sign, but ultimately, they do all total up to the amount identified there.
Very good. Any other questions?
No.
I don't.
Motions?
Make a motion that we approve Item Number 15, the change order number two, to Weber County and VHI.
Very good. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. To that, I have nothing. If neither of you will call it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
All right, we now come to the public hearing portion of this meeting. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene in a public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. To that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're now in a public hearing. The public hearing today is regarding a proposal ordinance change, 106-2-4, Weber County Code, to allow lot averaging to occur in an A3 zone. With that, we'll go to Charlie Ewerd. Mr. Ewerd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. So what we have before us is a request to modify the Weber County subdivision code. Currently, we've got a provision in our subdivision code that allows for lot averaging in the A1 and the A2 zones only, and those zones are in western Weber County. We've got a petitioner who owns property in the A3 zone who would like the opportunity to run a lot averaging subdivision in his property. And lot averaging, for those who may not remember, is essentially when you add up all the acreage of all the lots, and you add up all the widths of all the lots, on average, it stays exactly the same as what the zone would otherwise allow.
Beats the minimum.
Right. In the A1 and A2 zones, excuse me, we do allow, under lot averaging, those lots to be reduced to 80,000 square feet, and the width to be reduced to 80 feet. Whereas in the A1 and A2 zones, the acreage is typically 40,000 square feet, and the width is typically 150 feet. In the A3 zone, however, the acreage is typically two acres for single-family residences. Okay? So A3 is a little different than the A1 and A2 zones in that it requires double, essentially double the acreage, but the width still remains, the required width still remains the same. So a big question to ask is, does it comply with the general plan? And the West Central Weber County General Plan talks a little bit about various lot sizes that allow for preservation of open space. Planning Commission had a little bit of discussion about whether or not this does or doesn't preserve open space the way that the general plan asks for it to, but it does provide another tool that essentially will allow for the clustering of lots in a tighter area if the developer chooses to do so, with a few lots that could be bigger. And that bigger acreage could be perceived as essentially holding aside a little bit more open space. So Western Weber Planning Commission, they originally saw the request to allow for these lots to be as small as 20,000 square feet with 80-foot lot widths, but they asked for that to be changed. In the A3 zone, they said, let's not allow anything less than 40,000 square feet. So instead of two-acre lots, you can get approximately one-acre lots. And they said, instead of reducing the width, let's just leave it exactly as it is, 150 feet. So that's what the Western Weber Planning Commission asked for, a little bit different than what the petitioner requested. So a few alternatives, you can approve as-is, you can approve with some modifications, table of text amendment, or deny the text amendment. And for the Commissions, just to point this out for your attention, there are a couple of additions that staff have asked to be added into this code as well, just to provide a little bit more clarity and objectivity in approving these in the future, whether it be in the A1, A2, or A3 zone. But we're also recommending approval of the changes.
What are those changes you suggest to be in there?
So we're asking that, in order for us to track lot averaging over time, so that someone who gets like a five-acre lot in a subdivision where there are a bunch of 20,000-square-foot lots, that five-acre lot shouldn't be able to come up for re-dividing, otherwise the average gets all thrown off. And so we're asking for notes to be placed on the plat. We're asking for developers to provide tabulations that also get recorded on the plat so we can see exactly how each of these were set up in the first place, so we don't accidentally allow for things to get re-divided and density increased.
So my question to you, Charlie, when you do this kind of stuff, I actually am very supportive of it. But the question I have is, when they decided to stay at 150-foot frontage, what ends up happening is when you get to the corner lots? And of course, that's why you do so much of this, because if you want a corner lot to look like a piece of pie, you know, or do you want it to look like a quarter, you know, where you get a good square piece of property? And if you don't allow that to get away from the 150-foot, then you can't do that, you know? Yeah, you can't square it up so it looks appropriately. I understand them not wanting to go to 80-foot. That makes sense to me in that area, too. I agree with that. But it seems like they ought to be able to average that down, the corner lot, to 120 or 100, because the corner lot is always the issue. The other lots always, they end up fine, but the corner lot always ends up being the issue in zoning.
Yeah, yeah. How would you like to see that amended? We can address however we, however.
Well, I'd like to see that, I'm not opposed to what they said. I agree with everything, and I can vote for it. But I'd like to see the 150 change so that they, and maybe ought to make it just on the corners. I'm even, I'm not opposed to doing that, but I would like to see the corner lot be allowed a little narrower, some discretion right, so that they can, in fact, make the subdivision more uniform and protect, make it so that corner is, doesn't stand out so. Okay? So either of you have an opinion there?
Yeah, so my first question, Charlie, is the petitioner in favor of this revised? They applied for 80,000. This is a little more than that?
Well, it's not what they asked for, but they're willing to accept it.
Are they satisfied with it?
Yeah, we, I did discuss it with Mr. Harper. Obviously, I think they'd probably rather it be the smaller amount, the 20,000 square foot and the 80-foot width, but he said he can get what he needs to out of the one acre and 150-foot width.
Well, I'm a believer in clustering and lot averaging. If we're ever going to maintain any open space, that's our only hope in this county. And at the same time, we look at the affordable housing issue, and the larger we make these lots, the more infrastructure, roads, water, sewer that we put in, it's additional cost to everybody. And so the only way we get to the future for our grandkids and grandkids, as Commissioner Harvey would say, is to start looking now at our land use policies. We're headed in the right direction here. In my opinion, it probably doesn't go far enough. And I agree with Commissioner Jenkins. I think we need to maintain some flexibility with that to allow the Planning Commission or you to take that down to a reasonable amount, whether that be to 100 or 120-foot frontage. But we need some flexibility in there, because a lot of times, we tie the hands of what the proper use of that land use should be, and we cause ourselves problems. So I would just, I'd like to see you and Rick back in the room have a little more flexibility. I think you guys understand at least what, where we need to go in the future for this county for affordable housing and, very importantly, open space. And they can coexist. I'm a firm believer they can coexist, but it has to be with land policy. We can't continue down the same road that we've been on for the past number of years. It makes no sense.
Agreed. Thank you.
So, okay, so do you have, do you have a recommendation on how to help the corner lot?
Yeah.
Would you rather see us shut the frontage or give you flexibility on the corner lot? How would you like to see that?
Either way, either way, and I could write it whichever way you guys want. I don't think it's one way or the other for us.
What's your recommendation or suggestion?
Easiest thing to do, I think, right now would be to just to reduce that frontage and go to 120 feet instead of 150.
You can change the frontage.
You could change that now and.
Right.
All I gotta do is change a couple of numbers, get it over to Fatima, get you guys to sign that if you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, actually, that'd be easiest way, then we can move ahead today and not turn, or not hold this up one more cycle.
I like that, if you could make those changes.
Yeah. So, well, you guys can make the motion, so how would you care to do it? If you want to change it to 100 or 120, or what do you want to do?
Well, I would prefer just to give the flexibility that we allow the, basically let the staff make that change as they see somewhere between 100, 120, and allocate that based upon what makes sense for the logical subdivision process.
Yeah, but the problem with that comes, if we change the footage in here, we can change it and approve it, and it goes on like that. If we have to have him rewrite that.
Okay, I'll make, I'll change that. Let's go 120 feet.
Okay.
That's what you, is that your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion. To approve it with the change, it's 120-foot frontage, take that down from 150. And then, but allow you, when you approve the final plat, to allocate that how you best designate it, but it would be a minimum of 120.
Great.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense. Okay, I can, I'm good with that. Second?
Second. So, hold on just a second.
Wait, we can't do that.
Yes, we can. So this is a motion just to change the 150 to 120.
We're in an open meeting. We gotta go back.
We can't do it yet.
Hold on. In the open meeting, I believe we can change this, because then we're going to go ahead and discuss it. Is that not correct?
Well, you can't vote on it until you go back into the regular meeting. You can discuss it, and this can be what you plan on.
Okay. Actually, that makes sense.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Well, that's true. Wherever we are. Okay, so, don't move, Charlie. Why don't you go ahead to the second portion of this hearing, and then we'll go to public comment. So go to the second portion, which is, consider action on ZTA 2018-8, a request to create architectural landscaping and screening standards for the western Weber planning area.
Thank you. Once again, thank you for the opportunity. So you guys know that a few months ago, we approved a little bit more commercial area out west. One of the concerns that I had in doing so is we don't have any commercial standards, really, that are objective and applicable to the commercial areas out west. And so if we're looking for community aesthetics out west, we would need to adopt some kind of architectural standards. We've already adopted a number of standards in the Ogden Valley. In my opinion, they're not too onerous, and they can easily be applied out west. We made a couple of minor modifications to landscaping that you see in here. See a lot of red underline, a lot of, or, excuse me, a lot of blue underline, a lot of red strikeout here, but a lot of that is just rewritten for clarity purposes. So let me run you through your presentation really quickly. So this would be applicable to commercial multifamily uses. In the Ogden Valley, it's applicable to manufacturing. Out west, we wouldn't make it applicable to the M1, M2, or M3 zones, making it a little bit easier for the M3 zone specifically to develop the way that it sees fit, where it's so isolated out west. There are some vaguenesses, there are some redundancies in the current code that we're hoping to get cleaned up. In compliance with the general plan, new general plan amendment that the County Commission passed, I think it was in November, suggested a little bit more design quality for the commercial areas out west. Planning Commissions, both Planning Commissions says, we like the idea. The Ogden Valley likes just the small tweaks that are being changed to help their version read a little better and be more easily administered in their area. Western Weber likes the idea. We did talk to Western Weber about this being a temporary fix, grabbing from Ogden Valley and applying it out west. We would like to do a little bit more of a long-haul fix to really look at the intimate details of those communities out west and make sure we capture what those folks are hoping for in their, in their commercial areas. The folks, the Western Weber Planning Commission was a little bit more concerned about water conservation when it comes to landscaping, and so they were amenable to reducing the amount of live vegetation if folks volunteered to zero-scape those areas. Ogden Valley liked the idea, too, but they wanted a little bit more thought to go into it. So a few different alternatives. You can approve as-is, you can approve with changes, like you were thinking about the last one. Table it pending further review, which we're happy to come back with any kind of modifications you're looking for, or you can deny. And this one doesn't have a petitioner. This one is being run by the Planning Division.
Questions, Commissioners? All right. We'd like to open this up to the public at this time. Those who've come today to comment on this, and if you want to, right now is your time. Come on up. We'd love to hear from you. Just state your name and where you live.
My name is Cindy Harper, and I'm from West Warren, 6585 West, 700 North. And we are petitioning to try and get, because it's my kids, I always get emotional. But with our acreage, we have the 12 acres out there, and we want just the three acres for the kids. With us being in the A3 zone, two acres per kid, six acres, it's just too much for them to handle. And we're a family that we farm together. It would be more beneficial to have just the one acres with the kids. And fortunately, our wild bunch wants to live together. And we have the frontage, so the 100 to 120 frontage will work out really good with that modification improvement.
What would you prefer?
That's my question. Really, if this were starting right now and all over, what would you prefer?
Actually, the 100 to 120 will work out great, because we have the 560 frontage on 6700 West.
But if we're going to approve that today, it'll be 100 or it'll be 120. Which would you prefer?
To be on the safe side, 100.
That's what we wanted to hear.
Yes.
Your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who's come to talk to this? If not, then we'll go back, and I would like to see if one of you guys would like to make a motion to close this public hearing and reconvene back in a public meeting.
I'd love to make that motion.
Very good. I have a motion from Commissioner Farrar, and a second from Commissioner Harvey. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're now out of the public hearing, and we're in a position, if we'd like to, to take comments or take a motion or do whatever you'd care to do.
I'd be ready for a motion.
Go ahead.
If you would entertain it, Mr. Chair.
I'd love to.
In regards to the proposed ordinance change, 106-2-4, for lot averaging, I would move that we accept the proposal as presented by Mr. Ewerd and Planning Commission with the change that would allow frontages from, to be reduced from 150 to 100 feet.
A second? And a second.
I'm sorry, ordinance number four. Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Okay, there's still one more in front of us. That's the landscape one. Yeah, that'd be ZTA 2018-08.
I'll make a motion that we approve ZTA 28-8.
Second. And a second.
Ordinance five.
Ordinance five.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Very good. Thank you very much. You know, I'm, I like the fact that the Planning Commission looked at some zero-scape out there. I think that's the future around, and I'm very much a believer in trending that way. So thank you. So, that goes down to a couple of things I need to ask you about, Charlie. The Planning Commission talked to you the other night about the general plan out there. Did they, and they suggested that we hold off on it. Was that taken by motion?
No, very informal discussion with the, with the Planning Commission.
So very informal. So officially, we don't have any official position by the Planning Commission of West Weber, then?
They've mentioned their desires, but there isn't a motion that's been made.
Okay. Well, the reason I bring that up is because we've had this comment of whether we should continue on or not continue on, there's a fair amount of expense that goes with that, and this process that they're going through now to create a city out there. I assume that by the time the Lieutenant Governor gets through that, it'll be midsummer. It'll be several months to go through their portion of this study.
Yeah, that'll be a while. Yep.
Do they, is there a book-in, put on their time? Do they have a certain, by code, amount of time to do that?
Mr. Crockett, do you know the answer to that question?
Would you mind?
How long does the Governor, Lieutenant Governor's office have to get us a response back on the Western Weber incorporation petition?
So I believe the petition that was submitted, there has to be a response within 45 days. I'd have to verify that.
Well, a response from the county?
No, we've already provided our response to the LG's office. I believe under the statute, the Lieutenant Governor's office has to respond officially to the petition.
Okay.
Within 45 days of it being submitted.
Well, that'll be pretty quick, then.
Last time I checked was March 18th. It was the end of the 45 days.
The week. March 18th?
And I didn't check to see if that falls on a Saturday, Sunday, or?
Oh, I know. So you're telling me by next week, we could have an answer on the economic viability of this?
I believe, I'd have to, again, verify the dates, but if I remember correctly.
Surprise for that.
Come quickly.
Yeah, thank you very much. I didn't expect it to be that fast. Well, so this will all come to a head pretty quick, then?
And this was just a request for feasibility study?
Yeah, yeah, we understand that.
Yeah, and the feasibility study would take time after that before.
Oh. Oh, I thought this included.
It won't be the final answer next.
Yeah, this is a very long process.
That's the question I was asking.
So that could be months in the making.
So I've got a question for, you know, this is a fairly significant question for the county, in my opinion. Charlie, I'm going to put you on the spot. What would you think if we were to have a public hearing that invited more than just the Planning Commission, but members of the public, to weigh in whether they felt that they wanted to delay a general plan or movement for a revised general plan out there until this incorporation, or where they felt they should go forward with it now?
When it comes to public input, in my opinion, the more the merrier.
Okay, that's, that's what we're really weighing with, you know, the question is. And the Planning Commission obviously has their, you know, own thoughts on this issue, but other members of the public may not.
Right.
So, anyway, just.
Good thought, yeah. All right, so this puts us down to the end of our agenda. Time for Commissioner comments, but before we get to that point, I would like to try one more time a motion back on Action Item Number Three, the approval of elective service benefits to Terry Thompson and Charles Ewerd. Now, the reason I want to do this is because I've been informed by our council over here that you can't abstain unless you have a conflict of interest.
I do have a conflict here. I'm opposed to it.
Yeah, but that's, that's not a conflict.
The process would be, under our rules of procedure, that unless a member of the County Commission seeks recusal from voting on any question where the vote would constitute a conflict of interest, and that recusal is consented to by a majority of the remainder of the County Commission, all members of the County Commission, including the Chair, shall vote upon every question, ordinance, or resolution.
That sounds like House rules.
Yeah, that's the truth, isn't it? We had different rules in the Senate.
You guys were easy.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Well, anyway, I think we ought to try a motion again and see what happens.
We have, if, let me just make sure that I'm thinking clearly. If we don't, if we don't approve it, can you restate what you said? If we, if this were not to be approved, can you please restate what you said about, let's say we don't approve it? What, what, what is, what are the options?
First, if, if this is a discussion you want to go to in depth, I would like to inform you of your right to actually close this meeting, to seek my advice and counsel, and I would do it under the provision of pending a reasonably imminent litigation, given our conversations. That's an option that you have to, to consider.
Good to know. Does anybody want to do anything there? If I don't, I want to do this by the light of the sun. I want to stay open all the way.
Great. I just didn't keep it open.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
So, and would you mind explaining, with what I, what advice I gave before, as far as the ramifications of what your options are?
Right.
So my legal opinion with regards to this issue is that, in looking at the way that the policy, it was worded and is currently approved in form, where there is the option to receive the cash buyout, the cash payment, in analyzing with case law, according to principles of contract, that policy constitutes an offer. That offer was accepted upon Terry Thompson and James Ebert leaving office in good standing. In my opinion, that creates a legal obligation, a vested right that these two individuals who would have to receive the benefit under this policy. Now, I don't know, I, I understand that checks have been sent. I don't know if they've been cashed, I don't know the status of that. And I recognize the, the provision in our policy right now that says you have to have a signed contract. But given that...
We have been notified by Sarah that the contracts have been signed and returned. Is that right, Paige? Yes, okay. So we have the contracts in-house now.
Right, but even without the commission approval, I still believe there's a legally vested right in these two individuals to, if they choose to accept this benefit under the policy as it currently stands. And so my legal, well, I'll leave it at that, my legal recommend, well, my legal opinion is, yeah, there, yes, there is a vested right.
Do you have a recommendation? You know, good attorneys always give your, their clients recommendations.
I can't inform you what to do, but I will say, given my opinion that there is a legally vested right, they are entitled to this benefit under the policy.
Paige, you had a question?
Yeah, so my question, they have a legal right, but my, it's also, and maybe we can get a clarification, they've already, they already, at this point in time, have cashed their checks. In fact, they cashed their checks before I took office, from what I've been told.
The question would be then, you know, is, is there actually an issue left? I mean, what's the possibility of being able to interfere with that or to be able to...
Well, that's my, that's my point. If they've already cashed the checks, by us not approving this, how does it interfere with that? They've, they've got the money, they maybe already spent it.
Unless the county took some type of action to recover that, it really wouldn't change anything. There would still be a legally enforceable contract.
So in other words, so the point back that I asked you before, if they sue us, why would they sue us if they've already got the money in the bank?
It would take a reaction by the county commission. Like, if the, the checks hadn't been cashed and they were canceled, that would be one issue. But if they're already in the bank account, it would, it takes some type of action on the county.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see us, at least in my opinion, taking that action.
So Paige, Commissioner, could you come for a second? Commissioner made a comment there, and I want to find out, what day did you mail those checks? If they retired at the end of the year, what day would you have mailed them?
The payroll probably, if, from my timeline that I was looking at, they should have been paid these on February 1st.
February 1st.
February 1st.
That's good to know. Thank you, ma'am. All right. I think we know about everything there is to know about these, this payment now.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Here we go.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve it, and I'm, I'll make that motion with the understanding that the only reason I'm making that motion is that I, obviously, the horse is out of the barn. And I, if, if there was any way possible that I felt that we could retain that money or get it back, I wouldn't do that. But I, I don't think at this point in time, it's, it's worth any future brain damage by the commission, members of the public, that we continue to regurgitate this for the future. So, but I'd also say that in the minutes, make sure that it's very clear that I'm making that under protest, that I still feel I'm making it in the best interest of the citizens of this county to possibly avoid any litigation. But more importantly, what we've done today is eliminate this bad policy for future commissioners, so they, hopefully, they don't have to deal with this again at some point in time.
Very good. That's a great motion, and I want to make sure that the minutes reflect his disdain for what's happened. Commissioner?
I'll echo his comments with regards to the same thing. It was bad policy, self-serving, and I'm glad it's done.
Is that a second?
Nope.
Really?
Mm-hmm. I'm not going to second.
That'd be great, I love it. I'll second that. Oh, he's getting back to me here. I've not seconded it a couple of times. Very good. The motion has been made and it's been seconded, so it is before us all. Let's see, this is not roll call. I want a roll call vote on this.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey? I'll start with Commissioner Farrar, do you want to?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Harvey?
You know, when the horse is out of the barn, we go get it. But I think, but...
Get your halder out.
Well, it's not just that, though, but the potentiality of losing the case and then expending county dollars to recover some more money. The policy, the previous policy represented an offer as well.
Aye.
Aye. Wow. As you can see, we've wrestled with this, and it's been culminated today that that motion passes. But this goes beyond that, just so everybody understands. We had, we've notified, not asked for their commission, permission, but we notified the elected officials yesterday that we were likely to do away with this policy today. So we let them know. I didn't want to surprise anybody here. And we've done our due diligence on the front end, as you can see. So anyway, I appreciate all of you and your votes and your friendship. I want you to know that. So with that, commissioner comments. Anybody want to say anything? Are you all choked up? Commissioner Farrar?
I'm not that choked up, but, you know, we've, we've learned a couple of things here with this policy, and I think we've learned, really, what's, we make decisions and policies on what's best for the taxpayer, and I think we've accomplished that today. I hope we've accomplished one additional thing, which is really our procedures and money management, that, that I'm going to make sure that our HR department, Paige and Sarah, hold true to their word that we never put this commission or future commissions in the position of approving something that's already happened. Again, the procedure would be, an invoice comes in, we approve it before that checks goes out, in all cases, not just in some cases, all cases. And so I want that on the record in case this ever was to come up again, that, in my opinion, there needs to be some accountability if it slips through the cracks. So, again, that's not a threat, but it's a promise.
And I'll say, this is one thing that I can say now, today, for today. You have seen what it's like to wrestle with a topic, especially that's not savory. Yet, at the end of this, I'm confident that the three of us will get along, will work together. There's not an issue. We have a, we have a commission that's united. We don't always agree, but we're united, and we'll work things out, and then we'll move on, and we respect one another. And that, that's really refreshing to be in the midst of that right now, and I appreciate that.
Let me just say one other thing, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, and I think that, in echoing off of that, the reason I think it's good for, for this to be behind us is we have a fantastic opportunity with a number of opportunities that are coming before Weber County that you'll hear about over the next three or four months. I'd rather spend my efforts, I think I owe that to the public, to spend my efforts in developing these opportunities, increasing our tax base, sales tax, reducing property tax, doing those type of things that we know we can accomplish, rather than dealing with this. So let's get on with it, let's move on to the future. And I appreciate your indulgence over the past three or four weeks that I know haven't been a very pleasant conversation for my fellow commissioners.
Oh, I want to thank you, Commissioner Farrar, for your efforts and all you've done. You're a pleasant addition to this commission. And my friend Jim Harvey, as always, I appreciate your efforts and your professionalism, how you've attached this. This, these aren't easy decisions, and we work very hard, and we enjoy each other's company. And I appreciate you all so much, and I want you to know it. So with that, I had to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.